All right, so we're going to go through this section and we might elaborate on one more piece. It is already nine o'clock, so I am happy to go as fast as we're still as folks want, but it is nine o'clock and my bedtime was 30 minutes ago, so if I phase out, I apologize. So first thing up, we have here highway departments. So you have the superintendent salary and the winter roads wages that you both see in blue. Let's take these one at a time. So the highway superintendent's just 2% like the rest of them are. When you go down here, you see winter road wages and expenses. And these numbers look really weird to someone who hasn't been following this for a few years, because you'll see that last year went from 129, this year was 135, and last year was 120 and went to 121. But what happens here is with winter roads and wages, we are actually allowed by state law to deficit spend upon two conditions. Number one, we budget more than we budgeted last year. And number two, it's been approved by the FINCOM and by the select board to deficit spend. This generally happens around the month of March. This past year, we haven't had that issue, and past years prior to that, we have. These numbers are not reflective of the actual spending that you have for these two accounts. Why? Because we've never been able to get approval from the board or approval from town meeting to increase the numbers. We've always been encouraged to simply add $1 more. This year, you'll see that I'm pretty close. I mean, I'm like $18 more. I rounded up, I'm sorry. It was easier math. Over here, you see for winter road wages, 129 to 135. The reason that went up by about $6,000 is when Vicki went to a recent accounting class, they were actually informed that you're supposed to incorporate the coalies into the winter road wages.
Well, it's whatever you appropriate for them.
So it has to be consistent. Therefore, we increased this a little bit more than we would have normally at 130. So those two things are taken care of. Any questions on winter roads or winter expenses? Okay, so backtracking a little bit, what we did this year is we moved things around a little bit. But more specifically, when you're looking at the wages, how we calculate this, it's under union contract. It was 2% increase off the bat. In addition, the Board of Selectmen had a goal to fund the highway department at 52.2 weeks per year. That was the only department at this point that we were not fully funding. We were always hoping and relying on additional income coming in, whether it was funding from having jobs at the water department, where the water department now has a second employee, has had one for a while, and the amounts that have been budgeted in the past have not been fully utilized this year, we believe as a result. That employee has been hired at this point moving forward, so we expect this trend to continue, that less and less usage of the water department will be requested of the employees of the highway union. We also in years past have required the highway department to independently charge, until the funds ran out, the cemetery commission and the parks commission for wages in order to pay for mowing, which got really dicey over the past couple of years, because one of the arguments was you can only mow as many times as you have money in the budget for, which usually lasted about a month. And then it was a directive from the Board of Selectmen to continue mowing even though there wasn't funds to mow it. So this year, the 52.2 weeks per year incorporates all of that. One of the other prior notions on the highway department was that it would be supplemented by Chapter 90 work. That's a great idea. The problem is, you can't always guarantee the work, and there's not always work that the guys are able to sign up and get wages credited for on those jobs. This year, I think there's about five or seven projects in Chapter 90 for FY '17 that account for, I think it's about $10,000, give or take, in wages for, potentially for the highway workers, which does not count up from 37 weeks to 52.2 weeks of the year. This budget does not include overtime. Why does it not include overtime? The reason it does not is because we increased it substantially to cover the original wages for 52.2 weeks a year, and we're just going to kind of try to play it out this year and hope that we're able to accomplish some of the funds from the water department and some of the funds from Chapter 90. And between the two, we're hoping to be able to reimburse ourselves enough to cover the overtime that's generally accumulated in winter roads wages. That's also the reason you don't see overtime broken out at this point, because it generally is attributed to winter road wages, and it would just make that line in and of itself more complex. Any questions on that piece? So at the end of the day, what we did was we figured out what it would cost to fund the guys at 52.2 weeks a year, and then we simply took the winter road wage number 135.5 off the top and put the remaining into the general highway wages. Does that make sense for everyone? No questions? Good. Then you have the admin, assistant highway. This line has never been broken out. This is the secretarial clerical position that's in the highway department. It's always just been part of the other wages, but because this position is non-union and is a separate position in and of itself, we thought it wise to break this position out so you could see what was happening. This has all been a position that's existed for a number of years. The reason you show it in red is because it's a new line item that wasn't previously separated out from others. Does that make sense?
Then in essence, it's not an increase. It's just...
No, it's just, you know, if you look at this first glance, it looks like it's an increase. And the reason I put it in red, so it kind of flagged it so you could see that there was a difference in change. And if you look comparison, it is an increase. It's just being extracted from here.
But I have no account to, I have no account number to account that out, so I don't think we can actually bring that up. It should be included in that week's.
Okay, so we will need to find out and figure this piece out and see if we can find an account line item for it, if we can call the state and figure it out, or what we need to do. But I don't think that's going to make a lot of difference, because it's just the number broken out for you.
There is going to be something in there.
The next piece to look at is expenses. We have this broken out into four pieces. We already covered winter roads. Then we have the three here, general highway, road machinery, highway building expenses. Highway building expenses is the new line item, which essentially, we just extracted things from the other lines that were related specifically to the building and added those up, and those came to $19,632. You then have the general highway and the road machinery expenses, which what we did here, we kind of re-categorized what they were from past years. So if you look number to number, you're not going to get really a good comparison. It's going to be a lot similar to the fire department, where you merge the EMT wages and the fire department wages, and then you split them up in a different proportion. Same thing goes here. Road machinery wages are generally now relative to vehicles, vehicle-related things, gas, diesel, the like. General highway expenses accounts for the roads themselves and the expenses of photocopiers, things like that, that have to do with operating expenses and supplies. Questions? Okay, that's exciting. Other public works down here, you have street lighting. I am sorry about the number, but I think it says 26,000. Apparently, I used a weird color scheme there. So we reduced it a little bit based on past year expenses. And then you have tree worn expenses that we've actually increased to the $10,000. There's lots of works to be done with taking down trees in order to be safe for the community. And this is really way under budgeting what he would actually need, so generally, he has a few projects out of the worst of them that he has projected out, and if there's anything beyond that, he will need to go to the reserve fund for an unexpected expense for emergency. Questions? Good. Okay, public works total, you'll see that it went from FY '16 to 598 to 628 in FY '17. Again, that's incorporating 52.2 weeks of funding. Highway department changes, I went over this already with folks. Realigned budget categories, created the admin assistant wage line, which we may need to merge back in, and increased winter wages to account for the coal increases. Health and human services. All right, so first, we have the Board of Health. We have, over here, we did a 2% increase for the wage line. Board of Health expenses were actually reduced. The original request was much more, I'm not sure, I don't remember the whole thing. I think it was like 3,800, it was reduced to 3,000, because the laptop that was budgeted for was purchased this year with a grant. Shops program, we put this in its own line item at this point. This has been, you know, it was concerned last year we didn't have grant funding for it, but I think it's such a high public need to have the shops program that's highly utilized. If the Board of Selectmen doesn't feel it's important to have a shops program, we can remove it. But essentially, this funds it in and of itself to the best of our ability and the cost. The costs do vary based on how often we have to have the box picked up and how many containers we need. But that's our round guess. Any questions or concerns on that? Everyone go with the Board of Health? Cool. Council on Aging, you have wages and expenses. We did 2% on top of the council on aging expenses, and down here, we did reduce because that's what they asked for. Questions?
That's not 2%.
That's not 2%. That's a good question. Why is it not 2%?
It's not 2% because it includes an increase to the COA director's wages for 18 hours from whatever she's making now.
Did we pencil that in?
Yes, we did. And we wrote on the bottom that if there was money at the end for funding, that we would put that in there.
Money at the end of what?
When we were balancing the budget.
But so that shouldn't be in there? Yeah, so we'll take that out. Thank you.
Because there was no money left over.
That was, we flagged it.
Well, that was a note that I'm following. If there was money left over, we would have refused to value it.
About $109 doesn't cover it.
Okay.
Let me just make a note here real quick, so we're going to reduce that. Any questions on that piece? All right, Veterans Services, you have your Veterans Agent salary, which is 2% higher. And then we reduced the Veterans benefits to 35,000. We looked at this past number. It was requested at higher at 50,000. This is one of those lines that the majority of items in it, we get reimbursed 75% the following year. It really comes down to the answer of it depends on how many veterans are in town, how many move in, how many move out, the level of services that they need. And it's really, we don't know year to year, it could change, but we try to gauge it based on the information we have. Questions? Okay. Total, 113,000 in FY '16. This year went up about 4,000. I don't know what happened to your budget, Barbara. The library lined and just, it didn't like me, apparently. Okay, so over here with the library, you have library books, materials, expenses. You see that this line's in red, because this is a new line that didn't exist before. One of the concerns we ran into when we were doing the budget for the library was that there are certain requirements in order for them to meet accreditation, and certain parts of the numbers have to be a minimum standard. One of our biggest concerns was that some of us were under the impression that we had fully funded the library to accreditation last year, and apparently, we didn't, because we didn't take into account the exact amount of money that needed to be funded for library books, materials, expenses, which is a component of the accreditation piece. We had previously in years past broke out library utilities, so at this point, we've broken them out a lot more for two purposes. Number one, to make sure we clearly meet the accreditation standards, so we don't have something that's mixed in with another line and it's just not spent at the level it needs to be in order to meet the accreditation. Number two, it's more transparent and more clear. So I went through those two numbers over here. Library maintenance went up slightly. We're still working on the HVAC system piece, and hopefully, that will be up and rolling very soon. Library utilities went down slightly because we were talking about electricity going down. Library expenses, looks like they went down drastically, but that's because that money moved further down when it was broken out. And then up here, you have library wages, which is increased by 2%. That is 2%, right?
No, that's $8,000.
That's not 2%? Do we do another, do we do another error?
2% would be...
With FY '16, the 16 already had the...
Oh, you know what it is? We included the, everyone, yes. So what happened was there was a position that had recently increased to 18 hours per week, and when we had previously seen the budget...
So the line into...
15 is 13, 15 hours and 3...
So, but it was now an 18-hour a week person that was originally budgeted at a lower number, so we had to increase for the change of hours, and I think the wages changed. The wages changed too?
She was rescored by the personnel committee.
So the wages and the hours changed, so that new number reflects that in addition to the 2% or with it.
There's two positions, one was vacant, and you combined them.
It was only three hours and one was 15, so we combined it to 18.
So the one that was only three hours, was that in the budget too?
Yeah, it was a three-hour position and a 15-hour position, so we combined, but it's the same amount of time.
But increase in, increase in pay.
Because she was rescored by the personnel committee.
Okay.
Because she hadn't been done in eight years.
That's a new job combined.
Yeah. She was doing a lot more...
So it's a whole new job description, that's why the increase.
I'm so on this.
Well, two into one should be the same price, but it was a new scored job.
Making $10.
All right, okay, does that make sense?
Doing a lot more than eight years ago.
All right, so the next one we have here is the park commission. Park commission, you see wages is zero, because that used to be allocated for the highway department, so we fully funded them, so that went bye-bye. So you have the park commission expenses, which are 2,000. That covers their porta potty, electricity, and we believe that Randall will be able to absorb the church hill mowing with the new park.
More of that.
I was wondering who did that. It looked nice, except for the extra grass. Okay, any questions on that? All good? All right, so down here, we have the historical commission. We reduced them to $1,000. They had requested 1,800. The $1,000 covers the very basics expenses, which include, if you give me a second, the annual museum pass and building maintenance. So it's $480 for electricity and $100 for the museum pass, and then they had a little extra for building maintenance in that thousand. That's questions, concerns? Okay, total, culture and recreation, 148, went up to 153, so it's about a $5,000 increase. Employee benefits, everything in the red has gone up. Retirement contributions have increased, group health insurance for retirees, group health insurance period, Medicare has increased, and insurance general has increased. Things that have gone down, where the workman's comp is reduced to $36,000 based on the calculations from the company, and that's all we have there. Any questions? Everyone's good? Total here went up by about $50,000. And I believe we just went, I wish Donna was here for this question, Vicki. Maybe you have the answer. I believe the rate for the health insurance is increasing this year.
I believe so, yes.
So that would account for some of the health insurance increases there. And we haven't gone up in years, so we're well ahead of the game here. Debt and interest, here's the basic breakdown. Numbers that have gone down include the Norris School roof, which is now 134, so dropped 3,000 from last year because we're paying off the debt. And down here, we have our interest levels that have all decreased, except for the interest in the Halloween storm has increased. I'm not sure why that is.
It's a yearly loan.
Oh, so the answer is it depends?
Yep.
Gotcha.
Every Halloween, it changes.
And there's your summary total for each of those at the bottom, and that's it. That's all I got, all she wrote.
Are we retiring any debt this year?
It's a few years. So the questions, the questions that are still on the table, John, as I see them. The first question is, what do we do with the new growth? Crash. What do we do with the new growth number? Do we leave it at 180? Do we look to reduce it? How do we reduce it? And what direction does the Board of Selectmen wish to go with that? Right up.
I mean, the Board of Assessors is saying 110 is the proper number, and Mr. Swanson got up and explained that. I mean, we could put it higher based on historical trends, but, you know, we're just inflating it, and I'd rather deal with the problem now than deal with it later.
Okay, so let's say we move it, let's say we reduce it to 110,000. That puts assess $70,000 off. So the previous recommendations that we had made were, number one, you can reduce the funding to the reduction in the bus, and John's going to double-check what they voted tonight. Hopefully, that will correspond with keeping the reduction in place. But if not, the question is, does the Board wish to move forward with keeping the busing level the same as it is today with that additional saved 10K? That wasn't supposed to rhyme, but I think it did.
It's late, anything rhymes. Yeah. What? But that's only going to give us 10. Well, we got to start somewhere.
So that's 10. So then the next piece is the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation. Vicki, do you remember Donna's total that she said we're at now?
100, right now?
Did she say 193?
Yeah, I think so.
193, 633.
And before, we were at 177.
As the chief was saying, they use about 180-something a year for their costs? Did I remember that number right?
No, their number, as long as, as long as the ambulance receipts reserve going in on the revenue side does not exceed the total expenses for ambulance side, it's not a problem. So the ambulance side, as of right now, if you remember, I think we were at wages about 200,000, and we had about 40,000 additional ambulance expenses and billing equipment. So we can't exceed, no matter how much money we have in the budget, we can't put in more than, let's say, 240, because that's our cap. Is that what you were going to say?
Uh, yeah, sort of. So we have 193,000 in there currently. If we take $25,000 to put in the stabilization to potentially buy a new ambulance down the road, then you take the 142,000 away, that leaves you with 26,000 bucks, not anticipating another maybe $36,000, maybe $48,000 you might get in the next two months. Which would, so if you were to take this at town meeting, you'd have 26, and then you'd add another 50 maybe for the end of the year, so you'd end up with, you know, 76,000 bucks.
So 10,000 is very doable.
Another 10,000? So...
If we move it to 152.
So that, so you had 258,911 dollars in expenses for the ambulance. So if you took the 142 currently, you'd end up with like 116,000 bucks that the town would have to fund on its own.
So it's not changing the end of the day picture, it's just saying the amount of money coming in that needs to be matched on the other side, or up to the amount that can be spent. Does that, does that make sense?
And at that point, on May 17th, you cannot take more money, you cannot appropriate more money than what's actually in the account.
Right.
Because it's illegal.
So the current account holds 193. As we talked about before, we thought it was wise to keep at least $10,000 in the account for interest sub funds. That brings you down to 183. 25 of it, from there, goes to the ambulance stabilization fund, which brings you down to 163. Is that about right? Is anyone doing math here?
193 minus 25, 168, 633, minus the 142 is 26,633.
So that's not the number I'm going, not the way I'm going, Vicki. So 183 minus 10,000 to leave in the reserves.
190.
183 minus 10 is 183. Minus 25 is...
I don't know, I didn't do the calculation that way.
167? Thank you.
58, yeah.
So it's 167,000 up to we could put in, 167.
167.
Is the amount we could put into ambulance receipts reserve. Right now, we're at 142, so we could increase...
Did you say 1...
By 25.
160.
Does anyone go with these numbers? Are we redoing them?
I think 158. Want to get in?
I didn't, I didn't come up with the number, someone gave it to me.
173.
No, no, 193 is starting the day. Subtract 10K is 183. Subtract 25K is, is what?
57.
157.
158.
158.
Who's happy with the number here? 158, okay. 158 it is then. So that would be 16K more than what we currently have in that fund or in the revenue source. So in other words, this is the way I see it at this point. If you put money into the revenue, you can take money from the new growth. So that would move you from one, I think we're at 180 right now in new growth, so it would drop you down 16,000, and that would bring you to 1, oh God, please help. No, no one's out here. 164. So that would bring you down to 164 if you do the ambulance appropriation at 16K. If you reduce by another 10K for the elementary school, that brings you down to 154 for the transportation piece. If you then are able to take out another 10K for the overlay account, that brings you down to 144. Thoughts, comments?
So with those three potential revenue options, that's 30,000, right?
I'm sorry, 30,000, yeah. Well, actually, it would be more than that, it would be 36,000 between those three things.
To come up with 70,000.
Well, we said, if you guys wanted to go to 110, that would be 70,000, so we're at 36, which means we have 24 left.
24,000 left. We could increase new growth by 24. Well, we saved a few thousand by looking at one of those line items that had more than a 2%.
We can, we can make that work within.
Was there an issue with COA wages to be... Yeah, that was, so there's $30,000 there.
So we've got another 3, 4,000, something like that.
That includes the funds from the elected officials?
Yeah.
So that's about 2K, right? And then you said the council on aging error, which is 1K.
4,800 there.
4,800 where?
Look at 140. 47,000. What is that?
So we have 20K left.
If you go into 110, you have 30.
30K, 20K left.
We were at 24.
Yeah, we were at 24.
Yeah, we were at 24 a minute ago.
Yeah, before we made those two deductions. So that should bring us down to about 19 or so.
So at the end of the day, we have to come up with 70,000, right?
Yeah.
So we have 10,000 for reducing elementary transportation further, we have 10,000 for the overlay reducing, and then we have 16,000 for the ambulance receipts reserve for appropriation. Those things add up to 36,000. You add 4,000 to them from the changes in those wage lines that we just talked about, you're now at 40K. So, so, but approximately 40K, so that leaves you at a $20,000 deficit.
So you increase new growth by 20.
So you leave new growth at 144?
Well, that's a little smoke and mirrors, but, you know, but it's a guess, you know.
In reality, if the school department charged for the busing, the conversation is over.
25,000.
They could have collected to help the budget, and this conversation is over.
And we're potentially looking...
We pushed for that in our original meeting, was charge the fee that you can charge, charge the fee. And now we're, I'm going through every page right now looking, I mean, it's a...
You're going nickel and dime everybody.
Yeah, I mean, you're taking a lot.
So the other thing is too, that we need to look into, is John did mention that he believes we're still charging school choice, and that that school choice money comes to this line. But if that's the case, then we have to, we have to put it in the revenue side to raise and collect.
I guess, we just want to be careful with the new growth number, because if you make it too high and you can't set the tax rate in October, you need to come back to the town and cut the budget, or appropriate monies from stabilization or something. So it's kind of a fine line, and so, you know, if it's 20 grand, it depends on how much you collect in excise tax. I could potentially increase that revenue source in local receipts because we would have collected that much. The DOR doesn't necessarily like you to increase your revenues more than what you've actually collected the year before. They kind of will ask you that question, and they'll make you take it down, you know. So I guess there's potential, if it doesn't come through, to change that excise tax number, provided that we, we, you know, collect more than what we anticipate, you know, if we want, if we need to find money for that $20,000 if it doesn't come to fruition with the new growth. So just keep that in the back of your brain.
If you guessed right, you look good. If you don't, you don't.
Well, that's why you kind of be conservative, because then what happens is you're conservative, You have extra money, you have all the money you possibly can to tax, and you don't have to put money in local receipts as revenue sources, so that if you collect that much more, it just kind of dumps, potentially dumps them to your free cash.
So...
So just keep that in the back of your brain and making a decision.
Jackie and Charlie, what do you think about the school busing fee that Mike brought up?
I have a question. I know the school charged the fee, and they don't want to do it anymore. They, can we, as a town, charge? You know, not the school, but the select board?
I don't, I don't think that we would, because that's not really...
Instead of charging to come to board meetings.
Yeah.
Admission.
Only the school can do it?
Yeah.
John, you're back.
And that's the right conduit anyways.
So I have a question. We're discussing fees, and I thought we were asked by this board to stop charging and to refund people when we had savings. So I'm a little confused.
Well, that was last year.
I under, excuse me?
That was last year, and there was a surplus. So we were asked what our thought was on refunding it back or keeping it, and our thought was refunding it back. But that was up to the school committee. And they pushed it back on us and said, we decide, and we said, no, that's, that's a school commutation.
But we didn't know at that time that the school was going to bring it, you know, and stop charging and send it back to us. So we, we just agreed to reimburse people.
Stop charging and send it back to us?
Yeah. Well, I mean, you know, this, we didn't know that the school was just going to stop altogether charging. We didn't figure the $25,000...
Yeah, we got a, we got a good-sized disconnect here, because, because the messaging coming back to us was, we want to do refunds. We were so surprised by that.
Well, we were asked what our opinion would be, and you came to us and asked us, and we voted that if there is surplus money, then we should give it back to the people.
We, we came to you and asked you?
Yeah, it was brought up at our meeting.
I think we got a letter from you asking us to talk about it. I think that's how, how it came to the table.
Yeah, but then you came back to us asking us our opinion. But we can't mandate it. That's up to you folks. And we gave you our opinion of, if it's extra, give it back.
But, but you're so, but you're speaking as the town. I mean, that was certainly interpreted as, we don't agree with your, we don't agree with your charging for bus program.
If there was this...
So...
If the money wasn't...
Maybe, maybe we missed somehow, but we thought we were in this together. Not that we'd be here talking tonight about, well, if the school only charged for busing, right after you asked us to give you a list of people you should send checks to.
I don't disagree with you. I saw the confusion going back and forth with this. But looking at the budget now, today...
Yeah, but you, I mean, you could have looked at the budget. It's only 30 days ago, and it's the same thing, so...
Where else, where else are we going to get the money?
I mean, the other part to this is, it's late now.
Yeah.
What I'd like to do is see all these numbers put together for Tuesday night for the final decision.
Okay. We can do that.
Yeah, because you got two things on bus, right? I don't understand, I, I don't understand yet, and will soon, right, the, the aspect of not saving the bus, right? I think we may have a, a bus balancing issue as to, you know, how many people are on a bus, but I don't think we have an overall number of bus problem. I'll need to be convinced otherwise. And then, so you've got that savings, and then we need to, we need to do the calculation on the school choice and, and see what that number is, and contribute both of those on Monday. Then you'll know, and maybe those two together gets you to a different place.
Solve us a different, solve the issue.
Yeah, well, we, we put parents through the rigmarole enough, and, and we sort of took the feedback from you folks, that you had feedback from, from town, and you were speaking for the town.
Yeah, and they wanted the money reimbursed.
Go look at this, and then, and we said, all right, here's what we're thinking. And, and it came back to you, and you said, yeah, we'd like for that to be reimbursed.
But I think what Charlie's saying is, that was then for that pot of money. Now, if we're looking for more money, do we take, put it back on the table and discuss it?
Would have been better to say then. I don't think we have a taste for reinstituting fees after what we just, after what we just went through.
No, no. If there's a better way, then, you know, let's find it, I guess. Yep, go ahead up there.
I, I really do see them as two separate issues, because by rights, if there was a surplus, the money should have been returned to the people who paid it. I think that that's clear. Now, we're in the same situation we were, with a deficit in terms of transportation. And I, you know, you kind of have to go back and revisit the question again. It really wasn't that they, we didn't, I don't think they made a decision not knowing what they were doing. It was, do you take the $11,000 that was a surplus and then put it, and use it for other purposes? Or you do return it to the people who paid it for that specific intent? And that, I think everybody could say was the right thing to do. I, I believe it was.
I don't know, I'm not one of those. And I, I'm not speaking, and I'm definitely not speaking for my board here, but I thought that that savings should have been applied to everybody that pays for the bus, including taxpayers, not just people that paid fees. Right? So somehow it was, it was figured that any savings must have been against the money that was collected from, from parents that paid a fee, not just the overall bus thing. But anyway, I think make better decisions under the, with better information, and then on Monday, you'll, Monday you'll have that. Might be the place to leave it, but... And the school choice portion of that number was a considerable portion of the overall number, so that's a good thing, too.
Any other comments? Mike, you have a?
I just have a couple suggestions to be looked at, not tonight, but in the, tomorrow and Monday. Technology equipment and technology services. So we did cut that budget, and I'm not recommending we slash it, but is there anything that we can do to reduce that and still provide some sort of service, whether it's through the cable negotiation, whether it's through some sort of equipment grant? Are we, are we improving something, or are we maintaining with those two balances? And if we're just improving, is there anything we can do to reduce those a little bit? My other suggestion, and this is a tough one, is you look across the, you look across the entire town at training. If it's not essential and not required for your job, and when I say departments, all departments, then maybe that's a place to look. You're talking $100, $200 in departments, but if you add up 10, 15 departments, there's still a chunk of money there. And, you know, maybe there's a way to help fund those through different means, but to balance the budget, is that a way to save some of that money?
You need to add the 2,000 in for the Board of Assessors if you're looking at...
Balancing, yeah.
Well, I think, I think there can be some compromise within their budget for the 2,000, so that it would be within. On the, I don't know if you want me to speak to any of this right now, John.
I, I think we're kind of, we should probably wait until we get more information.
The, the only thing on the technology piece that I would say is, they're both at $8,000. We maintain this entire building on $8,000 for technology and $8,000 for services. This has been a very big concern of the Board of Selectmen that we've had conversations with in previous weeks on. $8,000 simply gets us, when we have an emergency or when we have a new computer, they come in, hook us up to the network, or set it up. The technology stuff, it's, oh, I'm sorry, supply, services also includes, we have, what's it called? It is SOFOS, which is our antivirus for all the computers in this building, which is a couple thousand dollars a year to protect all the computers and the network downstairs, the firewall. And then you also have Carbonite, which is our off-site backup service that we pay for. On the expenses side of things, we try to, these computers had not been updated in years, and as of last year, if you recall, we still had XP machines. So we are in the last phase of phasing out all the old machines and getting everything new and on the same OptiPlex model within three years' time, which is, saves costs hugely. When you have an issue with one, you know what the issue is for the next, because they're all in the same piece. It also includes adding a new, more disk space downstairs to our network, our server, because we're getting to the point where we're filling it up. We need to expend some funds. We have a problem with the switch up in the accountant's office, so either we need to have it replaced upstairs or downstairs.
I'm going to interrupt you. I think we're getting way too much detail on this.
Well, I was just adding up the dollars and cents.
No, I, I understand, but any other questions before? I mean, it's, it's late. But I think, I want to take a second to say, at least from my point of view, and you folks can chime in. It's probably the best process we've had since I've been here. Every year, it's getting better and better. So I want to thank the Finance Committee, Vicky, Donna's not here, Heather. I think it's a great process, so thank you for all your hard work and time.
I agree. I've seen them working really hard, and they're all doing a great job.
So just, just to summarize for the board, to make sure I understand, so what's going to happen? The Finance Committee is going to meet on Monday night. They're going to review any of the things they had questions on. Hopefully, the finance team, we can join them. We can give you a balanced thing over email, so you can look at it on Monday, or Tuesday afternoon. It should include the statistical data piece from John's end, the school side, looking at the Smith vocational, so we have an educated number to put in. It should also include the breakdown of the transportation piece and these transfer folk pieces, and we'll see if we can't come up with getting us to that 110.
And I think the fact that we're down to 25,000 on a $15 million budget is, is quite a, quite an accomplishment, so, thanks again. Anybody else have anything? Do you have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.